Thank you. I call together to order the June 6th Committee of the Whole for Planning and Public Works. Today in attendance, we have Councilmember Fields, Council Vice President Kritzer, Council President Forsyth, Councilmember Carson, and online, we have Councilmember Anderson. We have a full agenda today. We have 11 items, so we are going to hop right in. I did want to acknowledge one thing that is not on the agenda tonight. If we're going to move it to July is the report from Councilmember Khan and Councilmember Fields from their report from the NACTO conference, correct?
Sure.
Okay. I heard that that was the request. Awesome. Thanks. Okay, so we're going to hop in with item number one, resolution amending the city fee schedule to include fees for EV charging. And with us tonight, we have Jenny Liebeck and Jack Anderson. Thanks.
Yeah, good afternoon, Council. So again, with me tonight is Jack Anderson. He's our Climate and Sustainability Emeror Fellow. So Jack is going to provide an overview of this item, but before I hand it over to him, I did want to note that we had an error in the agenda materials. And so the final resolution that we will be reviewing with you will have a lower fee of 18 cents per kilowatt hour plus the penalty, not the currently stated 23 cents per kilowatt hour. So just wanted to flag that up front. So Jack, you want to review the item?
Hello, Councilmembers. So the city currently operates two public EV charging stations at the Municipal Operations Center in City Hall. Charging is currently offered at no cost to the public, but this has resulted in long dwell times at the chargers and frequent complaints to staff about vehicles parked at the stations for over the three-hour limit. Thus, we are proposing an 18 cent per kilowatt hour fee to charge at the stations, along with an additional fee of $5 an hour after the three-hour limit. This new fee structure will ideally reduce the long dwell times at the chargers, free up staff capacity, and help recoup some of the costs associated with the chargers. All will continue to promote EV adoption with the below market rate fee for EV charging. We are requesting council's approval to add this item to the consent agenda for the June 20th meeting and can now take any questions.
Thank you. And I'll announce that we've been joined by Councilmember Khan online. Are there questions from the council? Council President Forsyth.
Thank you. So what is it that we're trying to solve for here?
The primary challenge right now is the long dwell times for our public charging stations. And I should note, too, that this is intended to be a kind of Band-Aid solution for specifically existing chargers. This is not intended to solve our, you know, larger EV charging infrastructure planning processes. This is just to address those long dwell times and the complaints that our staff get and the kind of additional management that they have to deal with to mitigate those calls.
Okay, but the documentation provided says the average stay is just under three hours.
Correct. And those obviously under-three-hour stays are not the problem, but it's the about 35% of our stays that are beyond those three hours. Because what happens is, again, people call our front desk instead of ChargePoint, our third-party operator, and then we have to call ChargePoint, and it just creates this kind of circular process. So this is a best practice that's recommended even by ChargePoint for a fee structure to, again, help mitigate those folks who are staying beyond those posted time limits.
So I noticed that we also talk about equity in this solution. Can you touch on that a bit?
Can you expand?
You're saying that the reduced 18, now it's 18 cents per kilowatt hour, is an equity advantage as well. But in my view, the $5 cap actually creates a boundary and a barrier. Because if you are someone who only has access to public charging stations, you can't get a solid enough charge in three hours to really do much of anything. It takes, on average, four to 16, I believe it was, hours to actually get enough of a charge. So I'm just, I'm not in favor of the $5 penalty. So I just kind of want to hear where the thinking is at on that.
Yeah, so basically, we have an existing, a posted, three-hour limit that was established. So that is just basically supporting compliance with that posted three-hour limit. If we need to look at amending that posted time kind of constraint, you know, the intent is not that the charging stations are there for folks to completely fill their batteries, right? It's intended to be kind of a stopgap. So a three-hour charge can get an average car about 60 miles. So that helps get them, you know, to their next destination if they have a long commute or something like that. Again, if we want to have a conversation about broader policies and what role, or do we want to be in the market for long, you know, filling people's tanks, if you will, for full charges and things like that, that's another conversation that we can certainly have, you know, outside of this rate discussion, too.
Okay. Yeah, I'd be more interested in looking at removing the three-hour limit and actually charging more of a market rate. I think that's actually probably for folks who don't have access to charging at home makes a bit more sense, and it would solve the people camping on it for a longer time because a lot of folks do have charging at home. So they're not going to want to pay as much as they may have to pay here. So I'm, as this ordinance stands, I'm not in support.
Councilmember Fields.
Just a quick plug for electric motorcycles. Only takes me 30 minutes to charge my motorcycle. So there's no change to what we pay to ChargePoint. That's set, correct? This is all internal.
Mm-hmm.
And when you said that you called ChargePoint if someone violates our rule, what do they do?
Nothing. The car stays there.
I mean, so ChargePoint doesn't, they're not obligated to do anything, right? Okay.
Yeah, that's a parking enforcement issue.
Got it.
Ultimately, yeah.
I tend to agree with Council President Forsyth. I think just making this whatever the standard market rate is then gives the users that understanding that if they camp on it for five hours, they're going to pay that much more. And as you said, if they're really just a stopgap and they're trying to get from here to there, and this is an in-between interim, make sure I get there so they don't have the charging anxiety, which I don't have on my motorcycle, by the way, then I think that, you know, they can manage their finances, and I tend to agree with the market rate. And if somebody needs five hours, you know, they can go to any ChargePoint station and do that. So I would rather see us be consistent with the rest of the market.
So I'm hearing there's no support for the penalty element. We're fine with the per-kilowatt-hour fee just for recouping costs, but no penalty?
Well, if there's a penalty beyond a certain, I don't know if there's a feedback that when they're fully charged and they stay there another two hours, that's where the ultimate rudeness is, right? There should, and I don't know if there's a penalty already figured in, but if there's a penalty beyond normal market charging, then yes, I'm in favor of it, but not our three hours. Because I suspect that we did it to encourage people, encourage EVs in the beginning, and we made it free because we wanted to.
Encourage adoption.
Correct. So we're sort of past those days a little bit. Anyway, that's what I think. Thank you.
Councilmember Kritzer.
I have a couple of questions. First is, so in terms of the use, the one at City Hall seems to get use of neighboring community, probably city workers, councilmembers sometimes. But I'm curious, is the MOC one, is that typically used the most by employees, or is it used more by the public? You mentioned that employees found it frustrating that it would get blocked up, but it was by other employees, or, because I think of the MOC as not as kind of centrally located in the same way that the City Hall location is.
Yeah, so we don't have any ability to see who is charging, other than like anecdotal of like, oh, I saw that you were parked there, or that kind of thing. So we don't know who is charging. We don't have access to that kind of data. We only know how long they're charging and cost and things like that, so.
Okay. Well, yeah, because I think my only question would be on the MOC, is if it's really city employees using it more, then it seems like actually a nice amenity to be able to offer our employees and to encourage them to use, like, greener transit to get to work. So it looks like Director Burt potentially has an answer to my question.
Yes, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interject on this, but I think it's important. It is not city employees at the MOC. We have a white Tesla that likes to come and park in the morning before staff arrives, and the individual leaves and comes back five or six hours later. And we actually have staff going out and unplugging the vehicle. So the individual has been taking over the spot as a charging option. So that's something that actually last week, we're going to try to engage this individual because they're not allowing other people for that use. So it's not city staff out there.
Interesting. Thank you for that context.
You bet.
Which brings me to a second question, which is, if people are violating the three-hour limit, which seems to me, as you've mentioned, a parking enforcement issue, and we wanted to send someone a message, don't stay in that spot longer than three hours because that is the rule, then why wouldn't we just use ticketing as a way to enforce that rule versus changing the rate? I guess the rate is maybe much lower than a ticket. But I am curious whether that was considered, especially in something like that where someone is, could stay all day.
Yeah, so we did not evaluate ticketing. This was intended to be, as I mentioned, a little bit more quick fix to address some of the big challenges that our staff are having. And what Director Burt outlined for the MOC is not unique because we're getting the same thing here. So the intent is also, it's when we, a $5 penalty for staying, you know, an hour over is far more equitable as well than a ticket, you know, a parking ticket or things like that. And then, again, we haven't even gone into that with the transportation team as to whether that would even be, you know, financially realistic or feasible for us. So that's something we can certainly look into. But I think the proposal that we've outlined is right-sized with, again, the regional trends and best practices in charging, so.
Okay. And I'm not advocating for switching to ticketing. I just was curious whether it was considered, since it does seem like, you mentioned if it is an actual parking violation, then, you know, that might be something you would think about. But I do think this, to me, if the issue we're trying to solve for is people not parking for longer than three hours and kind of taking up more time than necessary, then I guess I have kind of the opposite thought on this from my fellow council members, which would be that maybe we don't charge up until three hours, but at three hours, we do have that $5 fee. We're obviously not going to give you the same direction here, but I wonder whether, because I think the amenity of having that free charging and encouraging people to charge for free or to be using EVs is really great. And if what we're really trying to solve for is getting people to not stay there all day, then maybe putting like a larger fee at the three hours would actually make more sense. But obviously, that is opposite of what others were thinking.
Thank you. Councilmember Carson.
Thank you. So I think Mr. Fields has it right in that we are past the time where you need to encourage people to get EVs. So I think market rate and ticket parking scoff laws that hang out for longer than three hours, so further than what Councilmember Kritzer. She said she wouldn't endorse it, but I do endorse it. I think that's what we're trying to curb. So that's, you know, you reward the things you want, you punish the things you don't. So it's easy as that.
Thank you, Mr. Carson. I don't see any hands raised online, so I'll chime in with my thoughts. Jenny, you've gotten a lot of feedback in this conversation, and this is our first touch on the item. So I'm keen to suggest that we see it again, we could even see it again in Mr. Carson's committee later this month. And so first of all, I want to check with my colleagues around the room, if referring it to committee again, to see it one more time next iteration. I'm seeing at least three head nods, and I'm suggesting so. I think if we could go forward with that, that'd be great. For my part, I think clarifying the role of these chargers moving forward, again, since they were installed to what their purpose is today, I think that that has really changed. And if we can solve toward that end, I think that's a really wise thing to do. Mr. Fields.
What would you want to see, what would you all want to see again? I'm not clear.
We have an ordinance in front of us that was recommended for consent on the 20th, and it sounds like we're not ready for that.
But I guess I would think that if we could just resolve it and then not have staff sort of guess at what we might want to see, if we can't solve it, and that we need staff to help us solve it, then what is it we need to solve, rather than just say, see it again?
Okay. I appreciate that feedback and acknowledge that we have 11 items we're balancing tonight, and we're on item one. So Jenny, maybe could you summarize what you think the next draft, based on the feedback you've heard tonight, what the feedback is that you might instill into a second draft?
Yeah, so what I'm hearing is kind of reevaluating the different rates, looking at two different rates, potentially free plus penalty or market rate and no penalty, and then evaluating some sort of enforcement option. So what I'll do is, we'll come back at the PES with those proposals and get council's feedback as to which path we want to bring forward. And we can do some additional due diligence to see whether one makes more sense over the other, just with the transportation team and things like that.
Councilmember Forsyth.
Thanks. Just real quick, I like the idea that Ms. Kritzer had. I still support looking at market rate, free up until three hours, but I wouldn't support a higher penalty than what's in the current plan.
Ms. Kritzer.
I was just going to say, I also wanted to acknowledge, I think the current proposal was thought through, and what Councilmember Stewart said at the end might be something for you all to consider, just in terms of when we bring this back, of just getting clarity on what is the vision going forward of the uses of these, and how does the policy that we decide on, that you all recommend, get tied to that. And hopefully, the ideas we shared will help you along that path. And if you come back also, you look at it and you say what we originally proposed is really the best, then I would also like to hear that.
Councilmember Carson.
Real quick, just on the parking limit. So on our streets right now, we have a two-hour limit, and this is a place where you can come and charge your vehicle for three hours, which to me seems excessive, not, it's not excessively long, but it's longer than we allow on the streets that we want to have, see turnover. So if we want to see turnover, we need to do, we need to enforce it. And that's, I mean, that's very clear that it's working in our downtown, where we have a two-hour limit and some one-hour limits. So I think we should really take that seriously and potentially do that. So I'd like to hear what council, the rest of the council members think of it, because if you want it to turn over, that's what's going to have to happen.
Yeah, so we can bring that back during PES. We'll be ready for that. One thing to note, too, is Director Helen noted that we don't actually have an enforcement mechanism, that that was done away, a parking enforcement mechanism, rather, that was done away within the 2122 budget. So we do want to make sure we're looking at other mechanisms there.
Sorry, I'll just jump up, Jenny.
Thanks.
And we have.
Director Allen joining the table.
We are providing enforcement downtown in terms of the parking, not campus enforcement. So the parking law right there and the structure is not having current enforcement. And I'll just add that we are currently assessing the need for that with the Redmond Community Center opening. And it would probably actually be more expensive for us to be doing an enforcement contract right now versus a potential fee in, which I think might actually be more of an incentive. So I just wanted to add that. At some point, though, we might be coming back to you with adding it, so that could be a time to add in the enforcement end, but just want to add that as context.
Thank you, because I knew I'd seen the enforcement. I'm like, wait a minute, I know there's been enforcement. Thank you.
Okay. So if there's no objection from the council, our plan is to let staff study the alternatives that we created here in the room today and come back and speak with us, very likely at a committee meeting later this month. Any objections from the council? Cool. I appreciate that collaborative conversation, everyone. Thanks so much. Thanks, Jenny. And now we're going to be joined for item number two by folks from the Community Development Planning Team. So we have, item number two is a status check-in on the Transportation Master Plan update. Council does have a study session, study session, excuse me, scheduled for June 13th. And we are joined by Vanji Garcia, Josh Mueller, Francesca Lidbury, and Lenaya Taylor, and Deputy Director Allen.
Thank you. We also have Micah Russ online. So hello, everyone. Happy Pride Month, by the ways. We wanted to represent to you the TPNE team, so you get to see everyone here today. We have three items coming up before you, so I'll just jump into the first one, which is update on the Transportation Master Plan. You'll remember that in the past, we came to you, Vanji, why am I blanking on the streets? Safety.
Safer Streets for All.
Safer Streets for All. There we go. Sorry, a lot of S's in there. And that, from that last conversation, we've actually created a matrix for you all to answer questions that weren't addressed from the prior one. And we're going to be continuing an ongoing matrix for you that will get updated. So we'll take your questions today, add that to the matrix, because we have a lot of items to get through today that you'll then see in the study session next week. So with that, I'll pitch over the Transportation Master Plan to Vanji.
Good evening, everyone. So nice to see everybody again. So this is the first update since February on the Transportation Master Plan that first introduced a local road safety plan. But first, I'd like to introduce a new member to the team, Francesca Liberty. She comes from the consulting side of things, and she spent eight years, the last eight years with the Transpo Group, who actually is currently working on the local road safety plan. But I will not spend too much time on everything, but we will take all our questions today, and we will be prepared to answer at next week's study session, where I will give you a progress update on the local road safety plan and what has been done with the Safer Streets for All Action Plan funded by the federal grant. We just actually got recent news that we have been accepted into the NLC Capstone Project partnering with GM and INRICS. So we're all going to be doing so much stuff with safety. Francesca will introduce the work that's been done on the Bicycle Design Guide update. Josh Mueller will be giving an explanation on the work on the current state assessment of transportation technologies. And lastly, Lenaya will be given the overview on the Route Trails Community Engagement Campaign. And we'd like to invite you all on Friday, on our launch of our pilot that is at Bear Creek Parkway and 161st. So on that, and after June 13th, we will be coming back in November to give another update. So with that, I'd like to ask any questions.
Are there questions from the council? Excuse me. Are there questions from the council ahead of our study session next week? Ms. Kritzer.
Just a quick question on the event on Friday. Can you just share for the listening public a little bit more about what that event will be, the details?
And that would be Lenaya.
Yes. So we're debuting wayfinding signage for the Heron-Rookery Trail. This was, the Route Trails campaign was to increase access to light rail stations. We asked community members about the four light rail stations and accessing them. And so this was identified as a pilot project that would increase access to the downtown light rail station. And so this is us just debuting some wayfinding signage, a few pedestrian safety updates, and revitalizing the space and letting people know that the trail exists.
Great, thanks.
Yeah. Council President Forsyth.
Thanks. Excited to hear about the being accepted into the program. That's really cool, great news. I hope that opens up some more grant opportunities for us. So I know we're having a study session next week, but as far as giving you input on questions, I can't do that since I have nothing to review to give questions on. So my question would, for you, would be, what should we anticipate next week?
Well, for the local road safety plan, I think the challenge for us has been, you know, we didn't know that we were going to get the Safer Streets for All grant. So we worked, started working on the local road safety plan work with Transpo. And you met our consultant the last time. However, we can't spend the federal money until we have the actual contract with PSRC. So we haven't actually gotten that contract done yet. So we will be going out with a request for qualifications soon. So we're trying to do that at the same time as we're getting the contract with PSRC. And what we've been working on is defining what the local road safety plan is going to do and have that as, I've always said, we want that adopted by the end of the year so we can apply for a grant in January. So in general, that local road safety plan will first be focused on our arterials and our collector streets, and will be focused on quick, low-cost projects and be, you know, faster crossings, fast implementation projects to be done. And all the questions that you asked the last time of that covered, you know, you'll have the issues matrix that you asked before about, about the regional trails. Francesca actually did the issues matrix, but the, everything else will hopefully be covered in, I think Councilmember Carson talked about education, that will be covered in the scope of work for the SS4A work. The goal will be with the finish of, oh, faster, sorry. The goal will be to finish the SS4A action plan so we can apply for the implementation grant the next time it comes around.
Okay. Look forward to reviewing those materials.
The next time, yeah.
That's really helpful, and I think one way to think about it for the council members, since we've had the conversation in February, we've all experienced more life in Redmond, and we've had more constituent engagement. So if new topics have come up that you might not yet think are on the matrix, or you might have questions ahead, be keeping those front of mind and passing them off to the staff is one way to think about it. Councilmember Kritzer, did you have a comment?
Counselor.
Oh, sorry, Councilmember Fields, I'm sorry.
But I'll go. Two things real quick. You sort of described a process of getting in a position, a better position, so that we can seek helpful funds. And if you can give us a status of what you think you need to do before you have the things in place and how council can help with that, I think that next week would be helpful to know, you know, what do we need to do internally from a system perspective and from a preparation perspective in order to apply for grants and seek partnerships, et cetera. It feels a little bit behind the curve here.
Well, we're actually all, we are doing what we need to be doing. I would have loved to have been finished with the Transportation Master Plan, but we are on the way, as we all know. As you will hear next week, that just Lenaya will discuss, the Route Trails, it's been an awesome experience of hearing back from the community of how they would like to get to the four light rail stations. And we will hear the trends of the four stations, because they're all different. So we will take those trends, and it'll be in our Transportation Master Plan. What would we like to see? What would we, what we are going to be doing after we have this document? And the support from council will be, it'll come in projects, it'll come in policies, and the support from you will be supporting that in the budget and programs.
Great. And then the second thing, real quick. One of the things I did learn in the conference in Denver is the uniqueness of every city. So yes, there are solutions that sort of everyone is trying to do, but there's unique situations in every town. I was struck by how wide the streets and the sidewalks are in Denver, and we have very narrow streets and very narrow sidewalks. We have a different problem. Also, we have lights every seven feet, I think, and they change from green to red pretty fast. And they, I'm kidding, right?
Yes.
But it's, so our signaling seems problematic. So in general, I would like some, at least some, either some discussion or some advance insight into what we will be doing to sort of solve those unique problems to Redmond, signaling being one of them. How do we overcome the infrastructure that we've already built and make it safe? We just got an email this week about how unsafe some of our pedestrian lights are, so.
Well, we will have that in the Transportation Master Plan, so.
Sure. I would like to be, have an opportunity to hear you talk about it next week.
So you want the finished product?
I don't want the finished product. I want some insight, as I put it.
Yes. Because we do have adaptive signaling on our agenda in just a little bit in this meeting. Thank you so much. Councilmember Kritzer.
Just a quick note, I know there's been. Just a quick note. I know there's been a lot of interest, in particular from council, around the bicycle design work. So I'm not sure where you all are at. I look forward to the update. But if there are any updated drafts, or materials, or visuals, I think it's always been something that's been really helpful for us when we have discussions about that, to be able to see kind of what is being proposed or amended, et cetera. So would love to see that with next week's discussion, if it's possible to attach that.
Counsel President Forsythe.
Thank you. I know we're short on time. So quickly, I would love to know if we've looked at some of those turn lanes that allow you to turn quickly without necessarily coming to a complete stop, and how potentially dangerous they are for pedestrians, especially in the Overlake area. I've seen many people nearly get hit. So I'd like to know if that, looking at that as part of the Transportation Master Plan.
You talking about like the free right? Is that what you're?
Yeah, the free right turns kind of situation.
Paul Cho, our traffic engineer, and I have talked about that, so.
Great, thanks. I can add that to the matrix.
Thank you. So I'm very dismayed, and I'm concerned that somehow this is, we've reverted. But the last, what I remember looking at, the last TMP I remember looking at, the West Lakes and Amish Parkway improvements were on the six-year time horizon, and these appear not to be anymore. And at least the design for, am I wrong? Because please tell me I'm wrong.
No, they are. I believe they are. They might not be funded.
I, I think you're referring to the TIP, which is our next agenda item. Do you have any further comments?
No, I guess, yeah.
Okay. So I think we're going to look forward to the study session on the 16th on this item. Thank you so much. And with the encouragement of Councilmember Carson, we'll move on to item number three, the update of the 2024-2029 Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program. Thank you so much. And Francesca, welcome to the team. With us, we are going to keep Deputy Director Allen, Vanji Garcia, and Josh Mueller. Thank you.
So you might want to remember the last, last year, when we were, Josh and I were presenting the TIP, why we are here not a year after, I was here during the budget cycle. This is an annual update of the TIP, which is required by the state. So this list that was in the attachment is the projects that are funded and also unfunded. And I'm pretty sure the West Lake Sam projects are on there. So one thing to think about, Councilmember Carson, is that the unfunded projects on the TIP list are projects that we would like to apply for grants. So if there are, if there is a project on this list that you would like us to apply for a grant, because I know West Lake Sam is one of them, so I actually have something in my head that I would like to apply for. So we would want them on this list. So if there isn't something on this list that you see, don't see, please let us know.
And just for process clarification for the community, we do, we have noticed, or we will be noticing, a public hearing for this item in July, our hearing this month, and then the council to approve it in early July.
Thank you for reminding me, Councilmember.
No, that's.
So the staff report is on the 20th, and if, the, our recommendation by, on the 20th is that it goes on consent on July 5th, and the public hearing is on the 5th also.
Okay. Councilmember Carson?
Thank you. So I, I have seen the TIP a few times since 2008, and this project's been on there since 2008. And it finally was showing up in the funded column at some point, and now it's not. And that's what I'm talking about. So, and it was, I think, about two years ago, maybe, maybe right before our budget. And I'm like, oh, my gosh, because I live on this stretch, and at times, it can be almost impossible to get out of the road. And if you have twice as much capacity in each direction, then your chances of actually getting out are higher, because obviously, it can handle more throughput. So you get more, more breaks, instead of a continuous five-minute, five minutes of traffic coming from downtown Redmond. So that's why I was like, wait a minute, what happened? And I realize we do, you know, apply for grants, but at some point, it was funded, and, and it was in the, I think, the 2026 timeframe, when I saw it last. But now, it's gray, and I don't like that reversion. So I'm, I'll have to go back and see if I can find the TIP that I saw, but I'm concerned. So.
We can do some research on that.
Well, it's been on, it's been on there since I started on the council, and that's one thing I would really love to see happen before I assume room temperature. So, or, or am not on the council anymore, die.
You recall which segment, since I'm not sure which segment we're talking about. Maybe we can take that conversation offline, if I could ask the two of you to connect prior to the staff report. Counsel President Forsythe.
Thank you. I have a similar memory of, as Mr. Carson, but there are about six different sections of the West Lake Sam.
It's the widening, yeah.
So I just was able to find the answer to my question. I see the bike ped portion of the funding is not grayed out. So that was one question. Second question, 148th, and how we have shifted and maneuvered to make sure that we can get the funding from the state for the bike ped.
Okay. Well, if we, do you want to answer? Okay. I have to hurry along, so we will answer that in the staff report.
Perfect. Other questions for the council before the staff report? Councilmember Fields?
Just real quick, Councilmember Carson brings up a sort of a higher level issue for me, is when these, if this happened, how does it happen? And how often does it happen where something, you know, we see in the budget process, and we see a six-year plan, and then it disappears, if it did disappear? So I would want to know how something like that does happen, and why council is not notified.
Okay. Okay. Any other comments on this item? All right. Well, we will look forward to the staff report, then. Thank you so much, team. We'll move on to item number four, which is the acceptance of a Sound Transit System Access Grant for 156th Avenue Cycle Track Project. And Vanji and.
And I'm here for support for Mica.
And Mica. Mica Ross is joining us. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon.
We can't hear you.
There we go. Okay. Yeah, this is accepting Sound Transit System Access Grant. This is for the 156th Avenue Cycle Track Project. The project limits are 28th Street to 31st Street, and 36th Street to 40th Street. The middle segment, you'll recall, is being built by the Microsoft Refresh. And you will see the construction acceptance, or the bid acceptance for this project as well on the 20th. And so we'll be looking to accept the grant and award construction in a couple weeks. Any questions?
Great. Thank you so much. And this item is recommended for consent on June 20th. Are there questions from the council on this item? Seeing none, I will just add my absolute enthusiasm. This is such a high priority for the city. It's ranked very highly in our CIP, and just represents a really important and critical interest between both our city and sound transit to make the whole system work. So thank you so much, Mica, for being with us. We'll see this on consent on the 20th. Thanks, team.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Thanks, all.
Thank you. We're going to have shuffling at the table here for just a moment as we transition to our public works items. Item number five on our agenda is to approve on-call agreements with Intertech, PSI, Cranzen, and MTC for material testing and special inspection services. This item is in, under consideration for consent on June 20th. Welcome, Director Burt.
Hello. I feel like I got the short chair today. Feel a little low. Standard on-call agreements that we use for outside consultants to come in, test materials, provide construction management oversight on an on-call basis across the board. They'll be applied to many different projects as we need them.
Questions from the council on this item? Counsel President Forsythe.
Is this number different than it was last go-around when we did the on-call contracts?
So it, we use quite a few on-call contracts across the board, so three different firms at $300,000 apiece. It doesn't mean we'll execute that amount, but this is a pretty standard agreement that we've executed in the past.
I just remembered the number being lower last time, so that's why I was trying to.
For this, this firm unto itself?
I don't recall. As you said, there are many.
Yeah, probably, probably. It, it depends on what kind of service that we're seeking, but we've found for materials testing and oversight that this is a, a good number for us. That carries us through a couple years.
A couple years, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Councilmember Critzer?
Just so that we can get a better idea of it, can you share a little bit more about the types of materials and tested and, and projects that this would apply to?
Yeah. So usually, these consultants will be on the ground, for example. We have construction inspectors and in-house, but this is augmented work. So if they're out on a construction site, and a contractor is putting in fill, for example, within the specs for that construction project, it'll be a certain type of aggregate. These individuals test that, ensure that it's the right aggregate that we called for in the specs, compaction, concrete, and even checking sometimes building materials against the packing list, for example, to ensure that, you know, we're getting the right type of rebar, or lumber, or other types of materials that are delivered on ground.
And do they check for environmental standards, or for, or is it mostly like a quality check?
It's, it's quality. It's QAQC, ensuring that we're getting the types of materials and the types of materials that we had called for on our construction specs are being installed.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Councilmember Fields?
I think we talked about this once before, but what is the authorization for a work order against this contract? What is the level? Who is that in the city hierarchy?
So what this is doing is, it's giving us the authority to spend up against that contract amount without coming back to council for individual work orders.
Yeah, no, I get that. Totally understand that. Not, that was not the question. The question is, at what, in your organization, what is the authority level to approve a work order under this contract, once council approves it? Who is that?
For this amount, that would be myself. It's been delegated down from the mayor.
So every work order, no matter what, the amount, goes through you?
Uh, depends. I mean, I have the authority, and then I do a subdelegation, depending on how much it is. I can get you what our matrix is, if you'd like.
Sure.
I don't have that in front of me right now.
Yep, thank you.
Yep, you bet.
Councilmember Forsythe?
One more. So the overview, overview statement says not to exceed 300,000 through the end of 2024, with a one-year optional add of 200,000. So that would then take these up to 500,000 each after 2024.
Over a three-year period, if we spend up to that amount, yes.
Okay. Thank you for the clarity.
And that's standard language on most of these, where we have an optional year.
Are there any objections from the council to sending these three contracts to our consent agenda on the 20th? Councilmember Fields?
If I can get the matrix, I am good with consent.
Is the matrix something we could see in the next week?
I can email it to you tomorrow.
Thanks, Director Burt. Okay, so we'll plan for this one to be on consent on the 20th. Did you have another comment, Councilmember Critzer? No, thumbs up. Okay, great. Awesome. We'll move on to item number six, then. Approve the Puget Sound Regional Council federal grant in the amount of 865,000 for the Adaptive Signals Downtown Project, and add the project to the 2324 CIP.
So this is actually somewhat of an exciting project in the fact, in the sense that it was like Christmas in May. One of our employees in our TOSI, our Transportation Operations Group, who's no longer with us, wrote this grant application to the PSRC, and we are informed this spring that we got awarded this money. It wasn't something that we were expecting. So that's why we're asking to add this into the, the CIP for 2324, using city business tax revenue in the amount of $135,000 as the local match. So the council approved in the 2324 budget, within the CIP, the Adaptive Signaling Project up in the Overlake area. The intent would be to use this almost as a economy of scale, and apply the same technology and technology solution into the downtown core along Redmond Way that we're going to apply for, or apply to in the Overlake area. Talking with staff on this, if this money is approved, they've already done some groundwork on this, because there was some pre-designed work done on the Adaptive Signaling back, I believe, in 2019, and then which time the council chose not to fund the project downtown. But what this will do is, it's probably about a six-month lead time to get the technological, if I can say that correctly, solution in place, and we could begin seeing some benefits of this by the end of the year or early in 2024 in both those corridors. So should be good.
Councilmember Critzer?
I'd just say, I'm really excited about this. Thank you to your staff, and especially that staff member that, that did the application.
Yeah, he went to Seattle, so we're sad to lose him.
Well, too bad. But, but I am glad that we got this award, and I have wanted to see this project done since we had that discussion back in 2020. And so I'm really glad to see it back in, in the CIP, and will enthusiastically vote for this. I think, in particular, it'll help us with improving safety, it'll help us with improving traffic, and it'll help us with improving reduction of idling vehicle times, so reducing our carbon emissions in our city. So it's really a win-win-win.
Yes.
Using smart city technology to solve a lot of issues.
Absolutely.
So, super excited about this.
There's a lot of enthusiasm. Every member in the chamber has their hand up. We're going to go to Councilmember Forsythe.
All right.
Thank you. Very excited about this as well. That was a tough call back in 2020 to remove this project, and it turned out for the better. We get grant money. So congratulations to us, and thank you for that work. You know my next question is always going to be bike ped access, and is it going to be adaptive to that? I know, Overlake, you had mentioned it wasn't, the Adaptive Signals.
I'll have to double-check on that. But what, you know, what this does do is accounts for the human mobility aspect of pedestrians crossing. I'll check with Paul Cho, our traffic engineer, to get you some more details on that.
That would be great. Thank you. Always, always going to be interested in making sure this is also inclusive of bikes and pedestrians.
Councilmember Fields?
So a quick follow-up to Councilmember Forsythe. So if I understand it, we are approving the grant, and then you will move forward with a, selecting a vendor. We don't have that vendor selected today, correct?
Correct.
And that, and it's an RFP process that would take roughly three months?
Well, actually, you know, Councilmember, I'll have to double-check on that, because I know that they had done some prior work in identification on this. But I would assume that would probably be a full RFP process, but I can let you know.
Okay. And just, I, I think I reminded council and y'all once before, we, council did not choose to not do the adaptive contract, because we didn't want to do it. What we chose was that it didn't, we couldn't see evidence that we had actually prepared to do it. And, and what we wanted to do is break this into two pieces and prepare to do it. And that, and therein lies my follow-up question to Councilmember Forsythe. I think that there's probably a lot of different interests, one being bike safety, one being, you know, main street, main thoroughfare more quickly. Will, in this RFP process, will you be defining those outcomes and prioritizing those various, I'm going to, not necessarily, some of the interests are in common, but some of them may not be. So will you be defining that in the RFP, and will you share that with council?
So Councilmember, Member Fields, if I'm hearing you correctly, you're asking, within the RFP process, will we place a prioritization on the movement of pedestrian and bicycles over vehicles, or vehicles over pedestrians and bicycles? And can the technology adapt to either or?
Yes. I'm not saying it should be one or the other. I'm saying, will you define that hierarchy of first priority, second priority, third priority?
I, I would say, and I, I'll double-check with the, the wizards that are way smarter on this stuff than I. But I think when you look at, in my understanding of this adaptive signaling technology, you're looking at mobility through the corridor. technology, you're looking at mobility through the corridor as a whole and there's competing interests, obviously, on all three of the, the components. And whether or not we can prioritize or place pedestrian and bike movement over vehicle, I'm not sure, but it's something I'll look at and get back to you on.
Just to be clear, that's exactly my question.
And I'll, I'll have to look at it a little bit further.
Right, thank you.
To see if that's how it can be structured.
And I'm not saying it should or shouldn't be one or the other.
Right.
I'm just saying, I think that we should know going into it.
Sure, absolutely.
We're going to go Carson, myself, and then back to Kritzer. Oh, I'm going to hop in then to just quickly say, I think that this project is going to be very popular with the public as well. And I, as per all of the discussions with council, I think one of the things I'm taking away from the conversation is our interest, I'll speak for myself, but my interest in continuing to prioritize safety as per all of our plans and our commitment to Vision Zero. Director Burt, thank you. Councilmember Kritzer.
I'd just like to comment, I do, I don't want to get into how the discussion that we had in 2020, but I do want to mention that, as noted in this document, the project had already completed preliminary engineering and we had spent over $100,000 of city money preparing for that project. So to say that we weren't prepared or that we didn't have the information, and we had actually done a study session before we began the budget with details about it, and somehow we then didn't know the details when we made that decision and changed, decided to use the money for other things, which is what the council decided. I would like to just recognize the staff did put in the time and effort in preparing that project at that time. And the council made a decision by majority that they didn't want to invest in that at the time, but I, I don't think that, I just want to be able to make that fact clear. And I'm glad that now we have this, this grant, so just wanted to say that.
All right. Seeing no questions online, we're going to move to item number seven. Oh, excuse me. Is, is everyone on council prepared to send this to consent on the 20th? Seeing thumbs up, great, thank you so much. The next item, item number seven, our agenda is approve on-call monitoring capacity contract, increase support of surface water, water monitoring program, also recommended for consent on June 20th. Director Burt.
During the budget, council provided money for the city to begin, to begin a new surface water monitoring program. What this does, we have a senior environmental scientist who's going to be spearheading this for us, but we need to bring in an outside consultant to help us further define programmatic goals, outcomes, and the methods in which we're going to be doing this, implementing, implementing, excuse me, implementing this program moving forward. So this, this funding gets us, gets us started.
Okay, great. Are there questions from the council on this item? Seeing none, I think that means we retain our enthusiasm from budget season.
Right.
And we'll see this one on consent on the 20th. Item number eight tonight is approve the supplemental agreement to existing on-call agreements with OTAC for engineering and inspection services for water lift stations and other CIP projects, also recommended for consent on June 20th. Director Burt.
Yeah, so OTAC is our engineering firm of record that is supporting us as we are undertaking our lift station rehabilitations and rebuild. We're continuing that process here into this biennium on our capital projects. This is a continuation of that contract, expanding it out by a million dollars to provide that support for us.
Questions from the council? Councilmember Forsyth.
Thank you.
And I will announce that Councilmember Anderson is leaving the meeting due to a conflict of interest with this contract. Thank you. Council President Forsyth.
Thank you. So could you just briefly touch, I think you may just have, but this says not in the current biennial budget, no other budget impacts, but the funding source is CIP. Do I have that correct? So, is the memo wrong? Am I wrong? Well, I'm reading the memo, so.
Oh, one second here. I gotta pull up the details on that.
I had the exact same question, so thank you, Council President.
Yeah, approved in current biennial budget, not applicable.
Are you seeing that on the? Are you seeing that on the council memo?
Yes.
On page three?
Um.
Where it says time constraints, or where are you referring to?
Yes, page two.
Page two.
Budget impact, $3 million, approved in current biennial budget, NA.
I think that might be a misprint. Happy to hold this, to get that clarified if you'd like.
Clarification beforehand would be great.
Okay, we'll go ahead and pull that and then I can get that clarified for you and let you know.
Thank you.
So it turns out my question was a little different than Councilmember Forsyth, so I'll go ahead and hop in. Director Burt, it was unclear from both the memo and your description, we were extending this contract with this vendor, but also increasing. So is the, is the continuation through time the increase or are you asking to add a million dollars to the past contracts? It's just a little bit unclear in the memo and since you're already getting some other questions.
Sure, it's the increase of the time and the dollar amount.
It is both.
Yes.
I see.
So we, we can be a little bit more clearer on the.
Sure. Could we understand a little bit why?
Why? This is the on-call contract, or the engineering contract that's supporting the lift station rehab and rebuild program that we have in place right now.
So why the increase, sorry?
Because we're continuing to stay with this vendor as we move into the next phase of the projects and the, the next lift stations that we'll be working on, starting in this biennium. So right now, we're just finishing up 12 and 13 and we'll be moving on to the next two lift stations in this biennium.
And the increase of cost, do the next two lift stations cost more for this work than the prior two or has the cost of work itself just risen?
No, the million dollars is reflective of the amount of time and effort that we'll need from this engineering firm to support the ongoing programmatic needs, the upcoming projects. So right now, the contract was at $2 million. This is a continuation of that contract, adding another million dollars and adding time to it for them to continue to provide this work. But I'll get that clarified on the, on that other question for you.
Any other questions from the council on this item? I see a couple of furrowed brows, so we're going to look for that, that clarification.
Yeah, not a problem.
Prior to seeing this item on consent on the 20th.
Yep.
Okay. Item number nine is approval of the 2021-2023 Pollution Prevention Assistance Interagency Agreement Amendment, also slated for consent on the 20th.
Department of Ecology funds one of our staff members to do environmental outreach, communications, and other actions. This amount and just under $12,000 is free money from the Department of Ecology to account for cost of living increases and merit pay in 2023.
Thank you. And Councilmember Anderson has rejoined the conversation for this item. Are there questions for the council? All right, I think we'll see this one on consent on the 20th. Thank you. Item number 10, approve consultant agreement with Matrix Consulting Group in the amount of 170,300 for the 2023 fleet study.
Correct. Matrix Consultants was selected to do our comprehensive fleet study. As a reminder, that's the rightsizing of the fleet, electrification, and whether or not we have the infrastructure to do so going forward. The intent is to undertake this study and have some preliminary recommendations by the end of the year that we'll be able to bring back and share with council.
Are there questions from the council on this item? Councilmember Forsyth.
Thank you. This was very interesting to read through and like see what's all going to be included in this study, so I was really appreciative of that. Interested if, in the growth element of the charging infrastructure, if there's a portion that talks about recouping fees and costs through community charging and if any of these charging areas are going to be public. That's the one part I didn't quite see.
Yeah, so, Council President, the majority of this look is the internal needs.
Okay.
That we're going to require for our fleet and it wasn't necessarily outward facing for the public.
So this would be like at the MOC and not.
The MOC, maybe continued expansion of charging facilities here at City Hall Garage, which is another project that we have coming up. Also taking a look at ancillary locations of parks and fire stations as well on what those needs would be.
So potentially parks would be open to public, though?
Potentially, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, yes and?
Yes and no, kind of more on the no versus the yes, but it will be a component that we'll take a look. Because we're looking at that infrastructure holistically of where we need this.
Right, thanks.
Yep.
Other questions from the council? Councilmember Fields.
So this study, I think I heard you hint that this would inform the MOC master plan work that you're doing.
In the sense that it will inform the plan in terms of how we're going to plan for a future fleet and the electrification of the fleet. That component of that type of electrical infrastructure will also be called out in our master planning process for the MOC. What this is getting us to is that identification of proper fleet size, what are the opportunities and ability for us to right-size the fleet and move to an electrification or more of an electrical-based fleet? And then what that would, what we would need for that infrastructure. So, yes, it will inform it, but it won't drive everything on the MOC master planning.
Thank you.
Other questions from the council? I will just chime in with a few comments. I, council, we had a very, we had a couple very healthy discussion, robust discussions on this matter and Director Burt, I trust that you've chosen the right person to, to do the job and to help inform this work. I just want to reiterate that I'm very eager to see the data help us inform progress toward our decarbonization goals by both 2015, by what the ESAP calls for, but also with the, the council's prior declaration of climate emergency. So to help inform some alternative analysis planning through this work, I just, I'm trusting that we're going to be able to do that with the results of this study.
Yep, definitely help us.
Okay. Any objections to sending this item to consent on June 20th? Seeing none, we will move on to our final item of the night. Thank you so much, everyone, for sticking with us. Item number 11 is approve consultant agreement with HDR for the Northeast 95th Street Bridge Replacement Project, also slated for consent on June 20th.
Initial design, as we talked about, conceptual design report, geotechnical assessment and engagement, doing some hydraulic modeling. So 95th Street Bridge is a small structure that is failing, it's impacting Bear Creek. What we're proposing to do is take that from a 15 or 16 million dollar project down to about a $5 million project to replace that bridge with actually a pedestrian and bicycle bridge. So that will have some potential impacts on mobility on that street, but that is something that we're going to begin to take a look at here with the development of this initial survey.
Thank you. And Councilmember Anderson has left the meeting due to a conflict of interest with this item. Are there questions from the council? Council President Forsyth.
So you could kind of just hit on exactly what I was confused about. So is this currently a car access area?
It is.
So this would close off the road?
Yes.
And turn this into only a bike pedestrian access?
Correct.
And, okay. So I wasn't reading it wrong. And this is doing a, have we done a study? We're doing a study? This one had me kind of, my head spinning.
Yeah, so this project has been floating out there for some time and it's been identified by the state that actually the, the embankments, or excuse me, the embutments of the current bridge is a barrier or fish, fish passage in this area as well. The initial look at this project, basically, it's 20 feet, the bridge is 20 feet long right now. The initial study, some work had gone into this in prior years and essentially what it was calling for was a complete rebuild of this bridge, extending the length of the bridge and having a larger impact on the stream itself in that area. When I was initially briefed on this and having a discussion with the mayor, in good conscience, as a steward of the taxpayer dollars, I could not justify replacing a 20-foot span at $16 million plus is what the initial estimates came back on. So talking with staff in terms of other options that we could do, there's going to be some expanded parkland in that area. We're pushing for an alternative that would take out the bridge, restore elements of the stream, and then place the, the bicycle and pedestrian access in there. So you could still have mobility across the stream in that area, but just not putting in a car bridge.
And what's the impact to the neighborhood?
So, there are a couple, the, the street is used as a cut-through at times off of Avondale, but we'll do some additional traffic modeling in this area to determine the impact, but most of the area impacted, there's one or two homes kind of near the bridge, but essentially it would be impacting one or two homeowners.
And have we done any outreach to those folks?
We're not at that stage yet and this is why we're doing the preliminary design and survey on this right now.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Fields.
So preliminary design survey means you're going to discover whether this idea that you have discussed with the mayor and is, is something that we can do or you've made the decision to do it and now you just want to see how it will work? I'm, I'm not clear on where we're at in the decision-making process.
So the decision-making process, Councilmember, right now is that we have to do an initial survey. We have to understand, you know, from a hydraulic standpoint, if we take out the bridge, what would be involved in the rebuild and rehabilitation. Understand the soils in and around the area, whether or not it would support this kind of rebuild. And then we also need to reach out to outside agencies to understand the impacting, permitting impact and also meet with the tribes to see if they would be in support of this. So I would say that, you know, it's a 5%, as we, we mentioned, looking at what would be involved in putting this alternative in. But I would say from the executive side of the house, we are pretty committed to making this change and going down this road.
And I think that's what I was asking is, what, what is the level of commitment? So then, then real quickly, and you don't need to answer it tonight, but what would be, what are the risks or what kinds of things could come up that would say, nope, you can't do that?
Sure.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kritzer.
Yeah, I also have quite a few questions about this project, but I'm, I'm curious in terms of studying it, if this is also going to include doing traffic study to understand the impacts on kind of the flow through, through that area, especially noting from looking at the map that it's near a school. So I assume that although there may not be that many residences right nearby, there probably is a lot of traffic in and out of that area and cutting off one of the kind of arterials across to one side of the city or the other is a question, as well as that it's near some other.
It's not, just for a point of clarification, it is not an arterial in any sense. It's a two-lane road with no shoulders and drop-offs and ditches, just so you know.
Yeah, and I, I've actually been near that, that.
Yeah, and I, I've actually been near that, that site to look at some of the Salmon Stream area near there, so I do recognize that it is a really important stream, and glad we're looking at it. But I do think, I'm just, so I'm curious to know, are we going to include an analysis of potential traffic impacts?
So the traffic modeling that had been done previously is outdated, and I don't trust the numbers, what they are, but that will be part of the process, yes.
Okay, great.
Council President Forsyth.
Just thinking about the, the financial aspect of it, so we're going from 15 or 16 million down to 5 million.
Roughly.
Roughly, approximately. I can say that I'm sure we will get a lot of comments about this once this has been implemented, because this is a very popular route to get to Redmond Ridge, just from folks getting stuck on Avondale, I know that for a fact. Would we be able to make that call to have that extra money that's, that we're quote-unquote "saving," move towards Avondale projects to ease some of the traffic considerations there?
So we have to do some analysis as it relates to if, in fact, these are the hard numbers that we're looking at for the replacement on this, and then the cost savings on the project where that could be applied. But, you know, obviously, it's transportation dollars for mobility. Whether or not it would necessarily go to Avondale, I can't tell you.
Okay.
But it's something that we'd definitely look at.
I think I would definitely be up for advocating for that same area to get those improvement dollars.
Councilmember Carson.
So I'm concerned about this. It is a pretty popular route also to Perrigo Park, and as we develop the parks out there, this is going to be, I think, problematic. I know that when I go to Perrigo, that's always the way I go for whatever reason, just I don't particularly care for Union Hill as a route, but I'm wondering if we, if, are there other alternatives? At one point, I became aware of this, this surplus bridge program in Washington State where old historic steel bridges, which are very narrow, just like this road, because I don't think we want, we're not up for actually making this a, an arterial, but have we looked at something kind of interesting like that, that it is kind of the historical part of, I mean, we have historical buildings in the area? Have we looked at anything like that?
So to create like a Bridges of Redmond City sort of motif?
Yeah, well, basically, these are.
I know what you're talking about, yeah. No, we haven't, and I don't know if I would be comfortable in pursuing that option just due to the fact that one of the things that, any way we look at it, with the narrowness of this stream and the, the need in which to build the embutments to put any type of bridge, and most of those bridges are longer than this span that we would need, so then you'd have a very large ramp-up to it. So I don't think we would pursue that.
Okay.
Yep.
So trying to weave together the various pieces, I'm hearing a lot of hesitation with this one, Director Burt. This is in our CIP, and it sounds like we still have questions. So I'm speaking to my colleagues now. I wonder, is this a project, because it's very difficult to pull the pieces and feel confident that we are making the right choice and that the community understands the choice we're making in this conversation we're having tonight. I'm wondering if the council and staff would be interested in adding to our study session next week? I've pulled up the extended agenda, there are two study sessions planned for 30 minutes. This, the ask of this item was to send it to consent on the 20th, and if we could get a storytime session on this project next week, would that be helpful to the council? Councilmember Fields.
So if I understood it right, all of the questions and concerns that we have would be answered by this, what'd you call it, design survey?
By going to 5% design?
Yeah.
So let's, I'd actually love to kind of go around the room then. That's a really good point, Mr. Fields. I, I didn't hear that everybody was there, so I heard it differently. So I'd love to check with folks. You're good with the 5%? Council President Forsyth, okay?
We can definitely bring it back once we go through this process. Regardless of what direction eventually gets approved, the work done here will inform all options.
Councilmember Critzer.
I guess I'm okay with funding a study to be able to, to look at this and basically come up with the alternatives. I think to councilmember Carson's point, I'd be interested in whether in the scope of work of this project, there might be any other alternatives assessed, or if the one, because it sounds like you're essentially going to be assessing the, the preferred alternative that you already have in mind. And I guess what I would love to see out of this is to really have a robust analysis of multiple alternatives, so that way we could look at those.
So we do have that, and it was done as part of the prior work, and I can share that with you. In the prior work that was done to look at all the options for this, the $16 million bridge replacement, it had, I want to say, three or four options in there. This scaled-down sort of option that we're leaning towards was one of those options. So that work has been done, and I'd be happy to share that with you as well.
So I guess to councilmember Stewart's point, I think at least having one more touchpoint on this before we vote on it, if we could get that information for me would be better. I know that supposedly this is in the CIP, but I don't feel that we've had a discussion about this in a significant way. And it sounds like even though this is going to be designing and not moving to actually doing, that it is really, still $500,000 is a major investment into, and it'll take us down the road towards one alternative.
Sure.
So before we get to that, I'd like to look at that alternatives analysis first.
You bet.
But see what other councilmembers think.
Other feedback from the council? Council President Forsyth.
I'm definitely in support of looking at this a bit further as well.
Okay, that's fine. Councilmember Carson.
Thank you. I just don't support not having a, an option to, to take traffic down this road. I mean, it's, it really hampers mobility in the, in the area, and I, I don't, I just can't see how this is going to work out very well in the long term. Sometimes you just have to bite the bullet and pay the price, but I would like to know what our alternatives are.
Sure.
Because, I mean, I, I don't disagree that 15 million is a lot of money, and, you know, I don't think any of us want to spend it on that. So given it's not a high, high priority route, but it is a route that we, some people rely on, so.
Sure.
Director Burt, last question from me at the moment. There's also a second call to action in the memo where it states that you're seeking authorization to negotiate and begin acquiring property, but that, we don't have anything else related to that. So I just wanted to be sure that the, the ask for the, the 20th that is before us is really just for the consultant agreement.
Yeah, hold on a second. I only have my script in front of me and not the details, so I want to.
So maybe that's something that can come back to us?
Yeah, absolutely.
So can I refer to council leadership, or can I request the assistance of council leadership to either find time in our study session next week, or committee next week, or something similar?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, I really appreciate that.
Yeah.
Are there any other comments on this item? Thank you so much. Mr. Fields is like, get us out of here, out to the sunshine. I totally get that. Okay, well, thank you so much, everyone, and thank you, Director Burt, for the follow-up that we're going to have on that. This meeting is adjourned.